A new website program that actually tracks crime trends. This is for Montgomery County. They've rolled that thing out and you can look at a map and you can actually see where the offense occurred and you can read about it by type and you can sort by area and by offense. And I was wondering if the chief might actually look into that and see if it's something we might be able to piggyback on?
He is already looking into it and expects to probably have a recommendation to me in the near future.
That'd be great, yes, because that's been a longstanding interest, people in Ward Six. Very interested to know where the crimes are occurring and something that they could check on the Internet, those that have access to, I think that would go a long way towards providing information that people have been interested in for some time.
Bruce, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Councilmember Barry, you might check out www.southofsligo.org, which is the Sasca website, and there's a gentleman named Joe Edgell, who's one of our community members, who has done something very similar. He's a crime man. It's a map of our ward and he has different picture icons for different types of crimes and the dates. And you scroll your mouse over the picture and it pops up what the crime was and what the date was.
Can you do that for the rest of the year?
I don't know, but he updates it once a week with information that comes from the weekly reports, but now that we have these more detailed crime reports, I'm sure it'll get even better.
But that is citywide, not just your neighborhood?
I only look at the parts from my neighborhood, so I don't know how much of it it covers. Does it go all citywide?
I saw early when it went.
Excellent, so.
But the blotter doesn't, the crime blotter doesn't include all the crimes that happen in the city, right? So it's just the more significant ones?
That's why I'm so excited about this new report, because it seems to include everything.
Do you have anything else? Um, Josh, Councilmember Wright.
As part of our mutual admiration society, I also want to thank Terry for, you know, he thanked me for doing it today, but Terry does this every week, I think every Monday, sometimes on Tuesdays also, distributing food to less fortunate people in our community who are hardworking but need a little extra. So I thank Terry for that, for all those efforts every day. And I would encourage anyone also, if they have the time, to spend the day with Terry doing it. It's a good reminder about the diversity in our city and the significant need that exists for some members of our community. So, thank you, Terry. I had a question for the city manager regarding 7118 Carroll Avenue, which is sort of an ongoing issue for the residents that live, I think mainly behind it. And I know the city manager knows the history of this probably better than I do, but I think recently we, something was done there to provide parking and make the facility better. The residents weren't actually fully involved in that process, according to them, and now we've gone back and we're making some adjustments to it. And I think a plan was submitted to the Housing Preservation Department, and they haven't, they weren't fully certain that the community was in agreement with what was submitted. So I just wanted to check with the city manager if we're having a process where we're going to go back and check in with the residents to work out and make sure we're all on the same page. Thanks.
I think for the benefit of the council, this was part of the Carroll Avenue streetscape project, and there was some modifications to the parking, and actually I think it fronts on to Park Avenue, so the residents on Park had expressed some concern. In response to that, the council did include in the FY08 budget $25,000 of funding to try to make some adjustments, and there has been some back and forth between the city staff and the residents in that area. That process is not yet complete. I did confirm with Ms. Daines earlier today that there has been no official filing with the Historic Preservation Commission. She had merely sent something over to their staff member to keep that person in the loop to say, here's some of the ideas that are being kicked around, but there has been no filing. Ms. Daines does have a meeting scheduled with one of the residents, Scott Hardy, Councilmember Wright. I believe it's this Friday.
Great, thank you.
I just have a couple of quick items. Over the last two months, three months, we've noted and recognized a number of deaths by prominent people in the area who have been very effective and helpful to the city, and we lost two more on Friday, both Councilmember Marilyn Prazner from Montgomery County Council and Park and Planning Commissioner Gene Lynch, who was the Chief Administrative Officer from Montgomery County under Neil Potter and was the Chief of Staff to then-Governor Glenn Denning. Both of them have been intimately involved in any number of issues that affect people in Tacoma Park, and I've commented in the past that in this very recent period of time that we seem to be losing a lot of very important people, and I had hoped that the trend would stop, and sadly it accelerated on Friday. So I just want to recognize both of those, and I imagine that we might want to do some resolutions of condolence for them on a future agenda. So just wanted to note that. Also, we've gotten some correspondence pertaining to a potential for losing a ride en route in the county executive's proposal for trying to cut some existing services to try and deal with the county's coming financial crisis in terms of finding $400 million that they don't have. And one of those is to lose the relatively recent ride on Route 127, which is the campus connector for Montgomery College. And when I was meeting with the provost up there last week, I saw that bus stop right there in front of the student building, and a number of people use it, and I know that it's been generating some ridership there, being a relatively new route. It takes a while to catch on sometimes. And so I just wanted to check with the council and see if anybody would object if we kind of followed our existing policies and about access to transit and lodged an opinion opposing that cut for that route. And if we want to do that, go ahead and send a letter, and if anybody wanted to testify at that hearing. Anybody have any objection to taking that position?
No, I would just also support and say that the college also wants the route to continue. And I think in being supportive of a good neighbor to our college, the college there, I think we should support their needs.
So if anybody's available and wants to testify on that in person, that would be wonderful, but we will send a letter no matter what. We don't have any minutes to adapt, so it's time for public comment period. If any members of the public would like to comment on anything at all, since this is a work session, and the only items that we don't take public comment on are those in a regular session where we're going to have a vote, and the appropriate time to comment on those is when we have that vote. So does anybody have any comment they'd like to make? And if they can do it, please keep your comments to three minutes and identify yourself.
My name's Harold Williams. I don't live in Tacoma Park, but I almost do. I live in Richmond. I teach at Montgomery College. I'm the astronomy person. And yeah, we really do need that ride on, because students often have to take classes at both campuses to fill their curricular needs. I just heard that. That's not really why I'm here. I was expecting somebody else to show up, but anyway, but anyway, but.
Go ahead with your topic, though, please.
My other topic is connected with the Starry Stories Festival, which we're going to, I think, run mainly in your district, up and down the street here, and we've looked over at the park over there, and it looks up great for the National Capital Astronomers to set up telescopes on June the 21st. We'll also have many activities before June the 21st to involve all of the apartment buildings up and down this way, to get people excited about this event, and so on and so forth, which is, I suppose, why I showed up today. If you have any questions, just ask me, and I'll tell you what I know, although I just got back in. I had to go to Florida. My mother had some health problems.
It's an exciting event. I'm glad that you're opening that discussion up with this council. I think in the future, the council is going to want to consider how the city can help with that event to make it as popular and as successful as you envision it.
Yeah. I think Elizabeth Forbes Wallace would like a letter at some point, the sooner the better, so she can get funds to pay some of the other people that don't come free, like me, for the college, because the college already pays me, so I don't need any more money. But there are other people from outside that can be brought in to improve the program greatly. Any other questions? Don't want to waste your time.
Thanks for your comments. Any other comments?
I don't see anything here concerning the transportation he talked about, but I have a concern. There are a couple of buildings isolated from the city, which I moved to, and there's no transportation. The nearest one is the 18th, ride on bus. It stops early in the evening. No Saturday late, no Sunday at all. And it has, it goes through the corner of the Silver Spring portion of the Montgomery College. I see the people walking. I do walk all the time. It's horrible nights late. How can you walk? I go through a park. When I leave now, I'll take the 17, then I'll walk through a park. It's dangerous. Or I walk from Silver Spring. In the morning, it's easy for me to go to work, because it's next, it's a couple of blocks, three blocks. I walk to next to the subway, where I work. But in the evenings, it's horrible. Sometimes you want to come back late, attend to something. Number 18. There is no other bus. Thought about that. You're counting on only the metro bus, which is expensive. We buy a pass. I use a pass of $10, bi-weekly, $10. Now I'm going to buy the tokens, which they start, but they repeat it, and they increase $1 on 10 tokens for $13.50. Transportation problem, financing, you should think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kaye Daniels Cohen, and I'm the acting president of Samuel Spriggs Carroll Neighborhood Association. And first, thank you all for allowing the citizenry to come and speak at every council meeting, whether it's a working session or a council meeting. I appreciate it. I'm sure the city of Tacoma Park does, too. I've come to keep you all informed about a letter that dropped, that I spoke about on or about October the 1st. SS Carroll requested a task force to study the issues at the junction, which is the intersection of Carroll Avenue and 410. I just want to keep you all up to date as to what we've done. As a citizens' association or a neighborhood association, we actually formed our own little committee, and we've been meeting. This upcoming, will be our fourth meeting, and we are actually addressing what we think are the issues, and we're just going to just keep pressing on until whatever happens. We are not requesting that we withdraw the task force issue. We do see that it's high on the mayor's list of agenda for his tenure, but we just didn't want to let it drop. We want to just keep pressing forward. It's definitely, and as you all know, as soon as the fire station goes to renovation, it will really be an interesting situation up there, beyond the beyond. And I think that's it. We're moving forward. We'll send a document. We'll present a formal document to the council once we come up with our ideas and plans and fun and games. Thank you.
And I thank you for that work, and I know that we're going to have to get around to dealing with the issue of what to do in the junction, and we know that it'll, it's delayed by the fire station construction, which unofficially really looks like it's going to start happening March 1.
Okay.
So we know we have a period of time when that's going on, and there's some issues with state highway there currently, and then the ongoing issue of the city-owned lot and how we might develop that and how that fits into the larger picture of development and redevelopment and traffic and any number of issues, so that some of the preliminary work that you all are doing is much appreciated, and hopefully we can roll that into a larger discussion as time goes on.
Absolutely. I mean, we are just doing this to be a system of support for you and for the city, because I think we've addressed most of the issues. There may be a couple of other little dangling ones out there. And of course, issue number one is traffic. So that's the one we've been focusing on, plus, you know, as we, there's one, two, three, four. But it's a group of SS Carroll members, and it's not just a couple of people. We've got about eight people on the committee. So it's a good cross-section of human beingness. Thank you so much.
Good. Thanks. Any other public comment? Okay. Does the city manager have any comments?
Just three brief items. I think at last week's meeting, Councilmember Wright had asked for some additional information about the Recreation Department's Hala Mew program. I do have a fairly detailed description that the director gave me, which I'll place in your box, but in brief, it is scheduled to meet twice a month, the first and the third Wednesdays of each month, from 5:00 to 6:00. The target age group is young men ages 13 through 18, and today they have met three times. They've actually sort of laid out kind of what their, the topics of their discussions will be, and as I indicated, I'll put that in the council's box, and you can kind of review that at your leisure. I did want to just mention to the council that WSSC does have some fairly extensive waterline replacement work planned for Sligo Creek Parkway. I'll be mentioning, working with the mayor tomorrow, but we have received a request from their engineering firm to be placed on a future council agenda so they can brief the council and the community about what those plans involve and how disruptive it will likely be for all of us. Third, just following up on Professor Williams' comments, I have met with Elizabeth Wallace several times about the event. I think the council may recall, it was originally planned for Jackie A. Park. She and I had a number of discussions just about the kind of logistical impact of that in terms of concerns we always receive from residents in that area about parking when the Jazz Fest takes place, and also just kind of the impact in terms of, you know, police directing traffic and things of that nature. So as Professor indicated, as Wallace and I have talked about, the city's sort of entering into a partnership and doing the event here in the community center, as well as using the field up the hill. In my discussions with her, I just wanted to clarify, I've not, so we talked about this council providing direct monetary financial support, but more support in the terms of the building, parking, you know, trying to coordinate some partnerships with, for instance, the library in terms of the children's reading club and things of that nature, but I have not had any discussions with her about the city providing direct cash support. And that certainly means she can still feel free to come and approach the council about, but we have not had any discussions to that nature. So we are kind of moving forward. Like I said, I think we're still trying to work out some details, but as Professor indicated, we're still shooting for June 21st, and I think there's still quite a bit of planning that would need to be done. What I've indicated to Ms. Wallace is just kind of taking into account, you know, workload issues and logistical issues, that she really needs to be kind of nailing down her plans probably in the next four to six weeks, so we have an idea of which rooms in the community center might be needed and any other type of staff support. So we'll continue to be working with her in that regard. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. Not really a question, but I just wanted to volunteer to be kind of a council liaison with Ms. Wallace on that festival, so that we can make sure that any bumps get smoothed out as quickly as possible.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, unless the council has any questions about any items.
Just, I wonder if during the conversation with WSSC, anything came up about Carroll Avenue sort of across from the fire station, because they did some water main repair work there. Residents are unclear whether they have more to do or more substantive fix to do, and they've left the sidewalk quite damaged and torn up. So I realize you might, I don't want to put you on the spot, I just wondered if it came up during the conversation.
No, I think the meetings that staff has attended so far, Councilmember Wright had been focused on the Sligo Creek Parkway and trying to figure out how we're going to detour traffic when that road is closed in sections. I can certainly follow up with the applicable staff about the issue you just raised.
Okay. And if I can just add, that we had some experience with Sligo Creek Park being closed for a lengthy period of time, and so we have some experience with how that detour works and how that affects everybody and.
Was it pretty?
No, it wasn't. And it was right as we were trying to do traffic counts on a traffic study, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we will move along to interviews, and the first one is Arts and Humanities Commission with Sally Brucker. If you want, sure, come up to the table. And if you'd just like to tell us a little bit about your interest in serving on the commission?
Okay. I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for almost, about 20 some years, and I'm a local artist. I run a nonprofit and arts and therapy program, and I've just been interested in serving the community on this committee for a while. I've worked with Tacoma Park, Montgomery College, and my community on a, I guess it's an appointed committee for a while, just relationships between the college and the community. And I've enjoyed that, but I started attending meetings of Arts and Humanities, and I felt that it'd be another new and interesting way to serve the community.
Great. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Brucker? Josh?
I'm excited to have you applying, and I think your unique set of skills and interests, combining therapy and arts together, are a good addition to the committee. And I remember seeing on Open Studio Day some of your, I guess you call them students, or?
Members.
Members who have done the arts therapy and was very impressed, so I'm excited about the possibility.
We look forward to appointing you to the commission and welcome your input. We'll probably be making appointments, I don't remember, the next week or two, and you'll get formal notification.
All right.
I have a question for the clerk. There are, maybe not on, maybe it wasn't this one. Now, this one actually, now, we're up to, we're pretty up to date on filling vacancies on this one. We have, what, three? If we appoint Ms. Brucker, there'll be three vacancies?
For the Arts and Humanities?
Yes. It says current vacancy is four, and so if we appoint her, it'll be three.
Okay.
And the vacancies get publicized in the newsletter on a, pretty much a continuing basis? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And next, for the Public Safety Systems Advisory Committee, Dave Borden. Welcome.
Thank you.
And if you would, tell us a little bit about your interest in serving on the Public Safety Committee.
Well, I'm interested from a few different angles. Excuse me. One is a personal one. I live in the Pine Crest neighborhood, a few steps, if I remember correctly, from the location where the postal worker was held up. We've had a, what seems like a protracted series of robberies in the neighborhood. I heard mention of an incident on University Avenue. I regularly frequent University Avenue for the Indian Restaurants, and that interests me as well. Professionally, I work in a field that is related to criminal justice, not directly what police do in a community, but through my work, I have many contacts, personal friendships with criminal justice professionals around the country at many different levels, particularly retired police officers. So I feel that through my ready access to such people, I'd be able to serve the community well by just having an easy time of bringing in information and perspectives on issues that face the police. And conversely, this would also add another layer in my professional world, having a more general understanding of criminal justice. Lastly, I am aware of a discussion taking place or pending on marijuana policy within the committee. I'm interested in taking part in that. That is how I heard about the opening, who friends was on the committee. But my interests are broad. I'm interested in being involved at the community level in government. Though I work in an advocacy profession, I think I have an academic sort of temperament, which I hope will be helpful. I've also, I've participated so far at an early level in the group Safe Tacoma. I've attended a meeting. I've advised since that time on nonprofit legal administrative matters, have been able to give some help in that area. So those are basically my set of interests in this.
Okay. Any questions?
Oh, sure.
Yes?
So it says you're the Executive Director of the Drug Reform Coordination Network, and that you said that you're a policy advocate, so are you like a harm reduction policy advocate? Are you an advocate for decriminalizing drug use? What's the?
We are advocates for both of those directions of policy.
Okay. What is the John W. Perry Fund Scholarship Program?
Well, we support, we provide scholarships to students who have lost their financial aid because of drug convictions under a federal law passed in 1998. We've actually been campaigning to repeal that law since 1998. We've had one success in narrowing it a couple of years ago, and there's another possible success in narrowing it further in the current Congress.
What do you see is the relationship between the work that you have done in that area, in the drug policy area, and the work on? area, in the drug policy area, and the work on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee specifically?
Well, I think the connection would be a limited one. As I mentioned, I'm interested in taking part in the discussion on marijuana policy. There, potentially, other issues could come up. I, I can't predict. Clearly, the drug war has a defining bearing on policing in the United States. It's a little less so perhaps in, in a place like Tacoma Park that is not a, a big city with the most intense environments of urban poverty. On the other hand, there, there is, you know, we have our less affluent areas. We, we do have crimes, and so the issue certainly has bearing on Tacoma Park as it does on every city. As far as the work of the committee, I, I don't feel able to predict how my background in drug policy could play into things, other than that I, I'm interested in being part of this marijuana policy discussion that is, that's taking place in the near term. I, I do want to reiterate that if I'm appointed to this committee, I intend to approach the work of the committee in the broad sense, all the issues that the committee is, is taking on involving public safety. And I am concerned, as a resident of where I live, we are facing a situation, a lot of people are, are concerned, at times worked up about it, I see on the email list, in Pinecrest. And so, you know...
They worked up about?
The, the, what seems to be a continuing series of robberies in the, in the neighborhood. There was another possible incident, it sounded like, involving, or something that got the students worried, at a school bus stop recently also.
Okay. Thank you. Can I clarify, did we ask the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee to look at marijuana policy in the city? No?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for stepping forward to volunteer for one of the city committees. I'd like to see all residents of the city involved at some level in, in community activities. I'd like to preface my questions just by saying that I, I certainly have, I think the drug laws in this country are of prime importance to the communities, and I think it's healthy for communities to examine those, those laws, especially when we look at a drug war that we're apparently losing, and the effect that, that drugs and drug enforcement have on low-income neighborhoods and low-income members of our community. That said, I think the point that Councilmember Clay just made is that, you know, we have not asked the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee to examine the marijuana laws or any of the other laws at this point. I think it would be a healthy discussion to take place, and I think Tacoma Park would be a good area to examine that. But I think it's important that you understand and acknowledge the fact that that isn't something that this council has asked the advisory committee, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, to do. And so I wouldn't want you to join the, the committee thinking that that was something you were going to accomplish by being there, because as an advisory committee, it is directed by the council on what activities we want done. And so I, I don't want you to join the committee thinking that's the task that you're going to be taking on, when that might not be. At some point, the council may want to formulate a committee to look at drug use in the city, and the drug laws in the city, or how, what steps we, we might want to take to, to support or to advocate against, for some changes in drug laws. But until the council directs the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee to do that, that's probably not something that's, that they're going to be working on. And I, and because of your background, I just wanted to make sure that you're ready to take on those other challenges that we do ask the committee to look at.
Well, I, I am interested in serving on the committee, whether or not it does take up marijuana or any other drug policy issue. And certainly, if appointed as a new member of a committee that is authorized by, by the council, I would take a humble approach to my suggestions of what we take up and how we take it up.
Great, and I think your background could be an asset for the committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll be making appointments in the next week.
Good, thank you very much.
This is the better time for my question for the city clerk, because I had noticed on this one, I knew I noticed it, and I thought it was on the first one, but it's on this one that, among those listed on the roster for the committee, there are four whose appointments expired in September of '07. Do we have any indication from any of those folks that they want to continue on the committee, or that they have resigned?
No, Jesse had, usually Jesse will write a letter, perform them. I'm not up to date as to whether he had heard any response from her or not. So the roster may not be up to date.
Okay. So it would, it would appear that there are most likely some openings. Okay. And I appreciate that she has some of that information, and given her personal situation, we may not know the answer for a while. Thanks. The next interview is for the Ethics Commission, Robert Anderson.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you for coming, and if you'd like to tell us a little bit about your interest for the Ethics Commission?
Okay. I've lived at Tacoma Park since 1972, and I've seen quite a few changes in the community during that time. But one thing that's always been important to me and been important to the community is ethics, making sure that the government is transparent, it's clean, it's honest, it's fair. And those are the kinds of things that are very important to me. In my job in Prince George's County Schools, I'm involved in the Office of Appeals. And one of the things that we do is take all the appeals that come to the superintendent, act as the superintendent says in New York. Try to make sure that we make decisions that are fair and equitable to all the youngsters, all the families who are involved, and continue that in a transparent way.
Good. Any questions? Molly?
Since you're my word, I just wanted to thank you for applying.
Oh, thank you.
And I appreciate that you've got background and experience in this area, and we know that the Ethics Commission has historically been not terribly busy, and that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
But we, but we need the committee to be there and available, and understand our law, and be ready, willing, and able to provide the service if required. And I believe, looking at the roster, that there are a number of vacancies on that. I know it has been hard sometimes to keep people's interest up over the long haul, since there hasn't been a whole lot of activity. So I think we need to find some more recruits to join in. Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, and in that same vein, since it is most likely you will be appointed to this committee, I would just like to advocate that the committee look at not just the current law, but also what changes we might make to that law to expand those areas that, that we consider the ethics, not just the ethics of the council, but the ethics in other parts of our government.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will make appointments. And now we're ready for our work session, work session agenda item on affordable housing, reviewing the existing housing policy and action plan, and looking at other affordable housing affordability programs. And then we only have one other item after that, so we have a good amount of time set aside to do this. This is something that the former mayor, who's here with us, had been pushing for and looking forward to.
Lobbying education paper.
And, and this was scheduled once or twice already, and...
This is the third time.
And it got bumped forward into this...
I was responsible for the other two, and for not getting them done at the time that I was in...
She bumped twice, we're doing it.
And I appreciate that very much. I appreciate you taking time.
So she's joining us for the discussion, so...
Thank you. Good evening. As you know, my name's Linda Walker. I've been overseeing the Affordable Housing Program in Tacoma Park since 2003. I also manage the Office on Landlord Tenet Affairs, and I've been doing that for quite a few years, longer than that. Purpose of the presentation this evening is to give you a brief overview of available affordable housing programming, which we hope will open a larger discussion on where we want to go from here, in terms of providing affordable housing in Tacoma Park. I'll briefly summarize some of our accomplishments that we've done in the past few years. And for ease in the discussion, Sarah and I have prepared a chart, which is included in your packet. And it's, we divided the Affordable Housing Programming into five different parts: housing development, housing preservation, homeownership, tenant assistance, legislation and regulatory measures. Before we look at the chart, in preparing the information for this meeting, what impressed me the most was that things have dramatically changed since the last time I gave a report in October of 2006. At that time, if you recall, the market was completely different, and at that time, we were just battling to keep up with new owners of rental properties, trying to convert the properties into condominiums. We were also looking at a rapid increase in investors looking at rental properties to buy, which they have done, and at very high prices, also converting into condominiums. So the market, as you know, has dramatically changed in the past year and a half. And right now, the condo market has taken a dramatic dip. Developers in, in all parts of the county are reconsidering condo conversions, and we've seen an upswing of foreclosures in Montgomery County and in all parts of Maryland, but also here in Tacoma Park, not just with single-family homes, but also small rental properties. So unfortunately, it's come to our attention that at least three small rental units in Tacoma Park are currently in process of being foreclosed on. And so this is a significant change in what we've been looking at previously, and, and certainly this is something that we want to address as well.
And that's three separate units?
Yes, three rental facilities. I'm, I'm not aware of single-family homes, but I imagine that there, there are also single-family homes that are currently in foreclosure. So although the problems and the issues are different, as we look at affordable housing right now, the overall goals that we mentioned in previous affordable housing plans and action reports are, are still the same. And the goals are to provide affordable homeownership opportunities, to continue to promote and provide affordable rental housing in Tacoma Park, to help prospective purchasers understand the full scope of being homeowners, to maintain and improve Tacoma Park's existing housing stock, to develop supportive and educational housing services for those living in Tacoma Park, to investigate and implement programs that provide various affordable housing choices, and ultimately to prevent homelessness. Just as a reminder, when we're looking at these affordable housing programs, we have to note that the median income for Montgomery County is currently $94,500 for a family of four people. This in itself is very astonishing. It's, it's one of the highest in the country. Many of the affordable housing programs that we're going to be discussing tonight will target the families that fall within 80% of this median, which is considered a moderate income or $75,000 a year. People within a 50% to 60% of the median are considered low-income residents, and those incomes total $47,000 to $56,000. And those who are in a very low-income bracket have $28,350,000. So the families that we're talking about are not just families that are on social security or public assistance. These are families who are working one job, two jobs, and possibly even three jobs. And they are the, you know, the working people here in Tacoma Park. So if you'd like to get at the chart, I think we can start discussing the various categories. And the first category that we have here is housing development. Housing development programs are considered the nuts and bolts for the creation of affordable housing. Included in this program, in this category, are programs that promote the development of affordable housing units, which can either be rental or for homeownership. Programs are usually administered by the State Housing Agency, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they emphasize a partnership among all the levels of government, nonprofits, and private housing agencies. The first category under this, under the housing development area are federal and state grant programs. And, and just to tell you that the chart that we've created here obviously do not include every single program. We wanted to give you a sampling of, of programs from each of the categories, and, and then, you know, further discussion for, for what we intend to do in the future.
We've also tried to address in the matrix the things that we've already accomplished in the existing Affordable Housing Policy and Action Plan. So when Linda goes through this, she'll, you know, things that we haven't tried before, looks at some options that are available to you, but also evaluates some of the progress that we've made with the programming that you've approved in the past.
Okay. The first federal program that we wanted to discuss was the Home Program. The Home Investment Partnership Program is a federal program that was started in 1990, and it provides funds to the state and certain local governments to promote affordable housing activity. Home funds may be used to finance construction, acquisition, and rehab of rental housing, owner-occupied housing, and special-needs housing, such as group homes. The programs are administered by the State Housing Agency, again, and they emphasize a partnership among all of the groups that are, are working in this area. The communities choose the mix of the housing that can come under this program, but it must comply with regulations, and it requires a local match of 25% from the local communities. And although this, this match can be calculated using waived or deferred taxes, reduced fees, cash, not from federal sources. This program is often linked with funding from the Maryland Rental Housing Fund and Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. The next program is the CDBG program, and this is the Community Development Block Grant Program that I'm sure... that I'm sure we're all familiar with. The program was established in 1996, and funds are provided to counties and cities on a formula basis. The grants are used to implement comprehensive revitalization programs in low-to-moderate-income areas. And Tacoma Park receives a portion of these funds from Montgomery County for fiscal year 2008. It's $135,000. So CDVG funds service programs to the communities. They're not especially earmarked for housing, so there are other service areas that often take advantage of CDVG monies. One of the accomplishments that we have experienced in the CDVG area is we did use money from this fund to fund the Tenant Capacity Building Program, which we started in 2003. And then we also received a grant last year for the Single Family Property Maintenance Program that we intend to put together the rules and the regulations for that program, which will allow grants for low-to-moderate-income seniors who are experiencing problems in keeping up their homes. And so that is a program that will go into effect next year.
Just as an aside, we're in the process of working with the county to see if we can speed that up so that, rather than waiting until the current program year has expired, that we can do two program years concurrently, which, once that gets finalized, then this program would be able to be initiated before the end of the fiscal year. This is the first time that the council has made a decision to allocate some of its block grant monies for capital improvements, such as what Linda has proposed. Historically, you've done some of your housing, affordable housing assistance with block grant funds for what they call social service or community service things, such as the capacity building program that Linda indicated.
The next program is the Community Legacy Program, which is also another program administered by the state. It's a competitive program designed to provide gap financing to revitalize targeted neighborhoods and communities. And when applying for these funds, the project has to already be conceived. We did apply for funds from this program approximately two and a half years ago. If you remember, there was a condo conversion taking place at 717 Sligo Creek Parkway. And we applied for funds to assist in the gap financing for this program. Unfortunately, we didn't get that award. The amount of money that has been targeted for the Community Legacy Program is currently $6.5 million. Moving on to Housing Trust Funds. Housing Trust Funds are another powerful tool for creating and funding affordable housing. We're lucky to be in an area where we have three Housing Trust Funds available for our use here in Tacoma Park. The first fund is the Maryland Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was established in 1992. And this offers deferred payment loan and grants for capital costs of acquiring, constructing, rehabbing, and preserving affordable housing, rental, and ownership housing. You must maintain affordability for at least 15 years, and housing must be provided to families who are 50% of the median or below. The next program is the Montgomery County Housing Initiative Fund, which is a similar type of fund, which was created in 1988. And it's administered by the County Department of Housing and Community Affairs. It provides flexible loans and grants to help create and preserve affordable housing. And it's funded by various sources here. 2.5% of property taxes, loan repayments, interest income appropriation. A condo conversion fee also helps to support this program. Developer fees, MPDU fees. The current budget for the Housing Initiative Fund is $28.6 million for fiscal year '08. And this averages out to approximately $14,000 per unit. The program is for new construction or rehab. It's very flexible. And again, it caters to people who are within at least 50% of the median or below. MHP and Victory Housing, two nonprofits who do a lot of work here in Tacoma Park and in Montgomery County, have successfully used this program as part of their financing packages. And we continue to hope that they'll still be interested in Tacoma Park in future years. The last Housing Trust Fund is the Greater Area Housing Trust Fund, which was created by the Council of Governments and the Washington Area Housing Partnership in 2003. And it provides low-interest loans to developers and nonprofits. This Housing Trust Fund has a regional focus and provides funding to DC, Maryland, and Virginia. And since 2002, it has closed on nine loans, which total around 825 affordable housing units in the area. The next category under Housing Development is Community Land Trust. And I think we've discussed the whole concept of Community Land Trust before, but these are private nonprofit corporations created to acquire and hold land for the benefit of the community. The nonprofit holds the ownership of the land, thus making it affordable for future buyers. And it usually is geared toward homeownership. In our area, there is a Community Land Trust called New Columbia Community Land Trust, which is, it receives public funds and donations. And it's a community-based land acquisition housing development in the Shaw Neighborhood in Washington, DC. And what happens is, properties are acquired in this land trust when the tenants exercise their right to purchase. And so this land trust includes a variety of properties, a lot of small rental units, sometimes six to eight units. And it also has senior housing in it. And the units can be sold, but the trust maintains the ownership of the land. There's also another Community Land Trust that we had the opportunity to go to a training on, which is located in Burlington, Vermont. And this land trust is one of the trusts that I think we originally got the concept, the idea for thinking about this idea for Tacoma Park. And with this trust, they capitalized the trust fund with a $200,000 grant from the city in 1983. And they have received supplemental public funds, donations, revenue generated from the resale of the properties, and rents. And for fiscal year '05, the budget for this particular Community Land Trust was $3.1 million. I tried to find out how many ownerships are included in this particular land trust. And the information I found on the web was about 2,500. So a combination of probably single-family homes and condominiums. Any questions on that particular category?
One thing I wanted to point out is that a year ago, we had investigated, along with Montgomery Housing Partnership and Montgomery County's Housing and Community Affairs Department, about the possibility of establishing a Community Land Trust. And at that point in time, there were a number of other things going on at the county level, and a decision was made not to proceed with the land trust and to instead expand or further the MPDU program to increase its long-term affordability. But again, it's something that's worth pursuing if that's a route that the council wanted to take.
The next category are tax incentive programs. And these are used by developers to reduce the high cost of creating housing, but it allows and ensures a respectable profit. We have a couple of different programs in this category. The first is the Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which is considered by housing developers to be the most important resource for creating affordable housing. The program was created in 1986 to encourage the private sector to invest in the construction and rehab of rental housing for low-income families. It gives states an annual tax credit allocation based on the population. And the state awards the credit on a competitive basis to the nonprofit or for-profit housing project. Investors in the project then claim the tax credit on their federal income tax returns. The equity that's created by the sale of tax credit allows a reduction of the property's mortgage, thus allowing the owner to lower the rents, making the units and the property more affordable. The Tax Exempt Bond Program. Oh, I just wanted to mention that both MHP and Victory Housing have used this program in their projects. The Tax Exempt Bond Program is issued by the state, local governments, municipalities, or organizations qualified by IRS for public projects or activities. And the purpose of the bonds is to raise funds. Insurers of municipal bonds receive a cash payment at the time of issuance in exchange for a promise to repay investors who buy the bonds. And repayments can be in short periods of time, or more often are 20, 30, or 40 years in length. Two types are available, a multifamily rental housing bond and a 501(c)(3) bond that are used by nonprofit developers. The next program under Tax Incentive Programs, which we probably are very familiar with, is the Payment in lieu of Taxes Agreements, shortened by being called pilots. And this is a waiver of property taxes for a defined period of time. And as you probably know, we've established pilot agreements with a number of nonprofits, Victory Housing and Montgomery Housing Partnership. And the pilots total approximately $37,500 for fiscal year '08. I wanted to just refer you to the last two pages of the chart because I think that it will give you a clear example of two particular projects in Tacoma Park. One is Victory Housing, which is located at 7051 Carroll Avenue. As you know, this is a senior facility with 187 rental units. And as you can see, the financing for this particular project used a number of the programs from the first two categories that we've been reviewing.
Are you going to make 14?
Yes, 14, sorry. So it included low-income housing tax credits, a conventional construction loan. It also used the Montgomery Housing Initiative Fund and the Montgomery County Revenue Authority, which owned the property prior to Victory Housing purchasing it, also contributing on that one. The second project is Montgomery Housing Partnership, which included, it was a scattered site for 641 Houston, 8624 Flower, and 1,001 through 1,005 University Boulevard. It entailed 75 units. And as well, you can see the certain amounts of money that they obtained from various sources from the first two categories, Housing Initiative Fund, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And they also got money from deferred development fees, a grant from Neighborhood Works America, which is a nonprofit housing organization nationwide. And they received a conventional loan and also a grant from Enterprise Green Communities. So when nonprofits endeavor to purchase rental properties in Tacoma Park, they utilize a number of different federal, state funding that they incorporate into their financing packages.
I've got a quick question on the example for Montgomery Housing Partnership. You just included that as an example of the type of thing that happens, that they do, but they own other properties in the city that may or may not use that same mix.
Yes, this was just one example because it was all, you know, at one time that they had applied. But a good many of their properties use similar funding.
One of the points to be taken from Linda's presentation regarding housing development is that many of these funds are very project-specific. So that you apply for community legacy funds or block grant funds or tax credits for a specific project as opposed to a program. And because of the costs and all the matching and the leverage requirements that are typical of many of these programs, to actually be successful in your effort, you have to sort of piggyback them on to one another. So it's not a simple process in terms of balancing out the requirements of one program so it works for the other program and then providing appropriate expertise, if you will, in terms of packaging the thing. So it'd be really nice to say, if we do a Community Land Trust, then all of our problems are solved. The reality is, it's many, many, many layers. And that's just for doing housing development.
And one of the things that all of these programs stress is the partnership of the nonprofit, local government, federal government. And we have certainly provided a partnership by providing what we have done in the past, which, you know, a part of it is the pilot program.
And do we have anything? Do you have anything that you can easily give us the kind of shows, say, everything that MHP is doing in the city?
We can pull that together for you.
Because I know they've also got Hancock Gardens and Edinburgh and maybe some others.
Right. They probably own about seven or eight properties down in Tacoma Park.
Yeah, so I just thought it might be a good idea for folks to have that, to see the breadth of what we're currently doing so that somebody doesn't get confused and think that these are the only examples.
Right, it is not.
When that gets pulled together, could we also have that breakdown by the percentage of median incomes?
Yes.
You know, what percentage are 30, 40, 50?
Yep, yep, we have that.
The other thing, that the spreadsheet that Linda went through for Victory Housing and for MHP, because the pilots are typically an operating subsidy, they do not show up in the MHP breakdown of costs. So that's an additional assistance, but it doesn't show up in the construction. It does, however, provide leverage to the other entities that are doing the low-income housing tax credits or the Housing Trust Fund to show that there is a local commitment and local involvement. So without that pilot, it makes it, it becomes problematic in terms of the show of support from the local municipality. And while sometimes we can just issue a letter of support saying this is a great project, we want you to fund it, frequently, it's more effective if there is something that the community or the municipality is also contributing in terms of cost sharing.
One of the things that you might like to see in addition to the list of entities that Montgomery Housing Partnership has worked with the city on, is the amount of pilots that the city has contributed to that. And you can see, actually, in terms of forgone taxes, we have made a significant contribution to a number of, particularly if you look at the mall total, we have made a significant contribution to it.
Yeah, and if we can, because there's also the, I don't remember the name, the Hampshire Tower, whatever it's called now.
Tacoma Overlook.
Tacoma Overlook. So we have kind of, in one simple place, the, you know, kind of, what our current affordable housing. the, you know, kind of what our current affordable housing investments are. Thank you, that's a good country.
We can give you a spreadsheet of the pilots for that particular project. It'll show up on the spreadsheet in terms of something that you've approved. However, because of changes in the ownership of that, that pilot was issued on behalf of CPDC's efforts to secure low-income housing tax credits for that project. They have since turned over their ownership tenacity. So that one, you've approved it, but nobody's going to take advantage of it, at least at this point in time. Just as a quick number, in the information that Linda's provided to you on page four in the matrix, the value of the pilots that were approved by the city council for this fiscal year is $37,500. The one thing that may be of interest is that whenever the county goes and does a pilot, they tie them to their funding sources. So if they have a 40-year note through the housing trust fund, they will do 100% pilot for the term of that agreement. So the value of their pilots, in a much higher budget and tax base, for FY '08 is about $8.7 million. So you look at the scale of it, and each municipality or community does what it can given its limitations or the parameters it has with its own budgets.
You know, this is just a work session. Probably later, we're going to have to talk about where to expend, I think, the 2,009 CDVG dollars and some other dollars that we have. Before we get to that session, I think it would be good to understand what our actual unmet need is, which is hard to do because we're in between census years. But if we have some other kind of data, I know, what? You're shaking your head already.
No, go ahead.
I know Alana was able to purchase some data when we were doing the New Hampshire Avenue corridor study. And if we couldn't get comprehensive data, maybe we could get a sample that would give us some sense of what our unmet need is and what the, at what levels those are at. Is it in low mod? Is it, you know, what's the unmet need in the moderate area? I know we wouldn't be able to very easily do a rental versus homeownership piece, but at least just in terms of income levels, that would be good to know. And it might be something to try to measure over time to the extent that we can, other than in these, you know, gross 10-year snapshots of 1970, 1980, 1990, 2000. So that would be good to know, so that we know where to target our efforts and if we're being successful. Another thing that I would like to know is what our total investment in affordable housing is across the various ways in which we do affordable housing, and what our commitments are for years out. So there's the pilots, which are a portion of that. You said 37,000 in forgone taxes this year. There is other budgetary dollars that are specific to how we do our affordable housing. Like, I understand that we have to have our own landlord-tenant COLTA group because of the specific housing regulations that we have in the community. Is that correct? We can't use the county's?
It's my understanding that we don't use COLTA or ULTA at the county level, the county level.
Well...
Yeah, the law's like, a lot of it has to do with rent stabilization.
Yeah, well, our landlord-tenant law is different. We have the addition of rent stabilization. And the way we operate COLTA is very expedient. We usually hear cases within two months of it being filed, whereas ULTA in the county oftentimes takes up to a year to hear a case. And they just have a totally different way of dealing with complaints, landlord-tenant complaints. Whereas we mediate or hear every complaint that's filed here. The county does not do that. They take complaints and they may very well decide that it's not a case that we go forward to ULTA, nor is it a case that they can mediate. So it just kind of ends up...
I wouldn't consider that a contribution, that portion of it a contribution to affordable housing because it's not something that we do specifically because of the way we do our affordable housing. But that, and then, there was a study that was done by a group at the University of Maryland, and it's Jaclyn Rogers, who I believe was the HCD director for Glendenning, and Rick...
The University of Maryland's Public Policy...
Yeah, then who's the HCD director of the county?
Richard Nelson.
Richard Nelson. It was done by Jaclyn Rogers and Richard Nelson that talked about what the city's investment was essentially in forgone tax revenues because of the impact of the rent stabilization law on the property values, which reduces the property value and therefore the property tax revenue, which I would also count as the city's contribution essentially to affordable housing. So I would like to know what that, so what our total investment is and in what areas we're making those investments, what our unmet need is. And then, what, in your opinion, is the existing, since you get to implement anything that the city does, what is the existing capacity in your city offices or approach that would give us the most impact for the dollars? Because, I mean, I think, maybe it's not obvious, but it seems to me like you wouldn't want us to go for an approach that would have you managing all kinds of land acquisition and sale because that would be...
Bad.
Yeah. Or, you know, like we talked about, we don't want to take on zoning. We don't want to change, you know, do something that's, you know, get zoning authority because we don't, that's not a capacity that we have. So what are the kinds of capacities that exist within the existing skill set and structure of your department that you think make those things, good things to pursue? So like, for example, in the community land trust, is that something that you could easily pursue or partnership, do a partnership with somebody with? And what would that, like, I'd like to get a sense of what that would look like. I'm kind of interested in the land trust idea. I'm also really kind of interested in the abandoned and neglected properties piece, and what a program to address that might look like and how much that would cost. And I think probably the third thing that I'm most interested in would be doing something like using the city's bonding capacity or city's insuring capacity to get funding to help people purchase housing, either as a co-op or even for single-family purchases. So those are my interests.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the things, and Councilmember Clay talked some about it, and that is, what is the need in the community? I think it goes beyond that. I think what we're interested in is the economic diversity of our residents in the city. And I would like to suggest that getting a real handle on that and getting an understanding of what the community's desires are for economic diversity within Tacoma Park, that we should force an economic diversity task force to try to measure what we have today and do some assessment and vote in public forums to see what the community really wants as far as maintaining or changing the level of economic diversity we have with our residents. And I would be willing to put together a formal proposal for the council. Very interesting.
I'm wondering if we can continue through the chart because I think some of the questions that you have and some of the efforts that we have made in the last four or five years, I think you'll see that they're in the areas that you're talking about.
Right.
And then I think we'll have a broader picture of what we've done and, you know, what are the possibilities for future.
Okay, I was thinking along the same lines. I wanted to see what Josh's question is. And then I thought, before we got back into the chart, we'd take a short break. So we'll do any remaining questions or break chart.
I think Councilmember Clay did a great job of sort of laying out the different pieces of analysis that would be helpful. The one I would add to that is, and maybe this isn't the study that she mentioned, but not only the cost, but can we quantify the benefit, the dollar benefit that the rent stabilization provides for people in terms of the de facto subsidy it creates for people's rents? I think would be helpful if you're talking about that overall picture.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a short break and we'll go back to page five. Okay, we'll take a short break and we'll go back to page five. You're always happy to talk.
I know you are. Page five, we're talking about regulatory measures that are used to create affordable housing units. And as you know, Montgomery County has the MPDU program established in 1974, which is still today seen as a very innovative program and is being copied by many jurisdictions. It requires developers to include a number of affordable housing units in a new development of 20 or more units. Generally, it's 12 to 15 percent of the total. And it's offset by a bonus density, and there's a control period of 30 years. So this program is typically has applied, has been applied to new construction, although recently we've had discussions with the county about including preservation of housing in this program, and they seem to be opening up a little bit about that. In terms of rezoning or expedited permitting, many jurisdictions are examining zoning requirements as a way to create affordable housing. And it's often controversial because it changes the status quo in neighborhoods by possibly waiving height restrictions or rezoning residential areas to include commercial or possibly the opposite. A few years back, I attended a neighborhood meeting where a representative of the Housing, Department of Housing in Montgomery County was there, and they were advocating to streamline the accessory apartment special exception process. And they had thought that this was a very good idea. However, the community representatives who were at this meeting were not in favor of it. So the review and modification of zoning regulations can create opportunity for more housing, and in this case, individual accessory apartments, but again, it's a very controversial method. Density bonuses are used in the MPDU program, and it varies from project to project. On page five, we go into the Housing Preservation Program. And these programs incorporate renovating or rehabbing existing housing. And funding is typically provided to the property owner themselves. It includes federal grants that are used to fund other programs. So we have, in Montgomery County, we have the multi-family and single-family rehab loan program, the single-family home rehab program, the repair and maintenance assistance program that's conducted by a nonprofit called Rebuilding Together. The Home Investment Partnership Program also deals with preservation. The homeowners tax credit program, which is sponsored by the state of Maryland as well as the city of Tacoma Park.
The budget amount for the city share of that program for FY08 is $160,000.
Great. Moving on to purchase and refinancing assistance. For homeownership, we have purchase assistance programs. For instance, in the More House for Less program, which is administered by the state of Maryland. It's a low-interest loan program, down payment and closing cost assistance to first-time homebuyers. The Mortgage Assistance Program, that's operated by the Housing Opportunities Commission. And they also have a revolving closing cost assistance program, also through Housing Opportunities Commission. The Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is administered by the Housing Opportunities Commission as well. This is the former Section 8 program. These are all programs that help tenants with homeownership. And Habitat Humanities also has a home purchase program. We have also had the opportunity to institute the revolving loan fund, which three tenant associations took advantage of. As you recall, the council allocated $25,000 to the tenant opportunity to purchase revolving loan fund. And so we've had three associations that utilize the money to purchase their properties or to investigate the purchase of the property for conversion into condominiums. All three tenant association have repaid the city the amounts that they borrowed. Then we have the education and capacity building programs. That's listed on page nine. The Montgomery Housing, County Housing Fair, which is a program that the city has continued to participate in along with other government entities as well as nonprofits. We've also looked at the idea of IDA accounts. Montgomery County Partnership currently is the only nonprofit in the county that has the authority to operate an IDA account. And so any resident in any of their properties can ask if they can participate in this individual educational and savings program where people learn how to become homeowners for eventual move to a home ownership opportunity. And so what happens under this program is that the state, MHP, provides a match to individual contributions, and it's a three-to-one matching fund. There's the Home Buyers Club, which Manna, you know, Manna in Washington, DC is an example of that kind of educational opportunity. We initially had a home buyers' club, but decided that doing the homeowners' educational program on a one-time basis was better. It got a better participation instead of a program that was conducted over a whole year's period of time. One of our major programs that has been successful is our tenant capacity building program. And this program, which was initiated in 2003, is where we decided to invest the bulk of our money for capacity building. Whenever we talked to people about affordable housing and where the monies would best be used, what we found is that if you have a tenant opportunity to purchase law and no one to assist the tenants when they have the opportunity to purchase, that this was a very big flaw in the process. So we used the, I think it was about $35,000 when we first initiated this, to start the tenant capacity building program. And this program has, in effect, worked with a number of different tenant associations to help them purchase their properties, and in addition, have helped tenant associations to form so that they can deal with issues in their rental property should they decide not to develop it into a condo conversion. In addition to some of the other tenant assistance programs, on page 11, we have the RAP program, which is a tenant assistance program. The Maryland Energy Assistance Program, which I also just heard on the radio, there's some threat of, you know, lowering the budget for this particular program nationwide. There's an emergency financial assistance program that Montgomery County has. And as you probably know, Tacoma Park has an emergency assistance fund, which we partner with the Adventist Community Services. And because we have been promoting this program for the last year or so, we've gotten over $7,000 in donations from community residents to support this particular program in Tacoma Park. So the people in Tacoma Park are very giving and see the need here. The Renters Tax Credit Program is a program that we also promote, and this is the same type of program, the homeowners' tax credit program, where renters as well can receive a tax credit even though they reside in a rental situation. They're entitled to tax credits if they fall within that particular income range. The other educational program that we've been sponsoring has been very successful is through the Latino Economic Community Development Program. And this program is an educational program geared for first-time homebuyers. And we've conducted four of those programs each year for a total of about $12,000 per year. And this has proven to be a way to really help prospective purchasers of property to become more knowledgeable about the process so they don't get scooped up by some of the scams that have been taking place here in the last few years. Additionally, we recently started a foreclosure prevention program with them, and we had our first training last year, and it was successful, so we are planning to continue on with that. The last category that we have is legislative and regulatory measures. And as you can see, there's quite a few laws. And as you can see, there's quite a few laws that exist in Tacoma Park, as well as the state and the county, that help preserve affordable housing. For us, the rental rent stabilization program is one that we've been using and has definitely kept rents at a lower level than currently exists in the county. For instance, fair market rents in the county for an efficiency are $1,025, whereas Tacoma Park, an efficiency is $582. A one-bedroom apartment in the county is $1,168, and Tacoma Park is $702. Two-bedroom is $1,325. In the rest of the county, in Tacoma Park, it's $833. So you see, the difference in the rental prices themselves is quite a bit lower in the city of Tacoma Park. The Maryland Condominium Act, which helps give tenants the right to purchase their unit. It's a long, involved process when a buyer decides to convert a property to condominiums, and tenants are given the right to purchase their unit. Plus, if they're seniors or lower income, they can qualify for possibly a three-year lease or a lifetime lease, depending on their income level. The Maryland condominium law extends the three years to a lifetime guarantee for seniors. And this applies to properties with 10 or more units. So for smaller properties in Tacoma Park, that particular part of the code would not pertain to buildings of less than 10 units. The Montgomery County First Right of Refusal, as you probably know, the county has a right to purchase any property in Tacoma Park. And this, excuse me, this applies to all county properties. And the tenants who are displaced from a property where a landlord is doing renovations under this particular Chapter 53A of the county law, the tenant displacement law, they're entitled to greater notice to vacate plus reimbursement of two months' rent as relocation costs. So there are laws in the county that help tenants when properties are being either renovated or converted to condos. And last but not least, our own tenant opportunity to purchase law. We have been discussing lately when we bring our changes of the housing law to you, we will be asking you for consideration of changing the law to include the city of Tacoma Park as having the right to purchase any property in Tacoma Park. If, in the future, we decide we do want to purchase properties or we want to exercise our right in addition to the county, that we feel that that would be an important part of including that in the law. So in summary, those are the five different categories of law, of categories of housing development. We've continued to, I think one of our basic and, you know, our best accomplishments in the area is that in the last two to three years, we have fostered partnerships with the county, with the local nonprofit organizations to help maintain affordable housing in Tacoma Park. Five rental properties were saved from possible conversion to market-rate condos this past few years, which total approximately 112 units. If we include the property on New Hampshire Avenue, that would be an additional 216 units. We've restructured our rent stabilization law by exempting certain properties from the law, which allows interested housing organizations that are applying for funding from federal, state, and county sources to be successful in their bids for these funds. And so we have instituted a fair return petition process, which we believe will help those homeowners who are, who feel burdened by the restrictions of rent stabilization to attain a fair return on their investment. And we also have provided, as I mentioned, financial assistance to the revolving loan fund to at least three of these tenant associations. We have 11 properties now owned by housing nonprofit organizations for a total of 766 units. These are properties that were purchased by MHP and Victory Housing. So their total number of units in Tacoma Park are about 766 units. And we currently have approximately 16 market-rate condominiums, which total about 550 units. So approximately, there are about 3,300 rental, licensed rental units in Tacoma Park. And these statistics that are mentioned are in addition to the 3,300. So, given all of the programs that are available, I think this kind of opens up the discussion to where we go from here. And I know that some of your questions and the data that you want us to present to you for the next meeting will maybe help you make that decision.
May I add just something very briefly?
Sure.
In terms of this effort, as many of you know, the city has had priority on preserving affordable housing for a number of years. And I think the one thing that we had discovered is that anything you do in this area is going to be, one, controversial and, two, expensive. And I don't think that there's probably a simple consensus position on any of those things out there. So to the extent that you work on this, and I commend your interest in continuing to work on it, I think you're going to have to deal with those things. The city has been, I think, very successful in the affordable renting, rental housing issue, both with rent stabilization. And I would just put an additional emphasis on what Linda said about the tenant right of first refusal, that we enable tenants not only to purchase their buildings, but we give them the means to do it, which I don't know if any other entity does that. We give them help in organizing the tenants' association, which is often the very first hurdle. They can't even organize a tenants' association to even approach the issue. We help them organize, we provide them with upfront money where to get the professional experience they need to do the financing and to find out what their legal options are. And so we have really empowered many tenants' organizations in the city to deal with a situation where their landlord is trying to sell the building. And we have had successful outcomes working with nonprofits and with the county, both of which have been invaluable partners in preserving a lot of affordable rental housing. And speaking personally, I think the future of affordable rental housing in this area is probably going to very heavily depend on nonprofit ownership. Many of the private owners who came to you and came to us during the rent stabilization discussion have said that if they couldn't afford to maintain affordable housing, they may very well be right. It may be that you can't expect a profit off affordable rental housing, that it may need to be in nonprofit hands, or at least a lot of the buildings may need to be in nonprofit hands. So I think the city is ahead of the crowd in terms of doing a lot of those things. We have chewed on this nut of providing affordable homeownership opportunities for years and years without coming to satisfactory solution. And in part, that's because the cost of homeownership, providing affordable homeownership opportunities, is orders of magnitude above what we're spending on affordable rental opportunities. I think it would have to be some major funding source that the city would need to dedicate to doing that. I would commend your looking at that. We did make some, Colleen was quite helpful. She and I and Sarah sat down, and we sort of put our heads together and came up with some ideas. I think she's got some good expertise in this. But it's going to be a long haul, but I would be happy to do whatever I can to, you know, help with any efforts you want to make in the affordable homeownership opportunities. With the increase in real estate values in the last few years, I think it's become absolutely critical. In order to keep economic diversity in our community, we have to work not just on affordable rental opportunities, which continue to be critical, but also on homeownership opportunities for people with even moderate incomes.
I just wanted to add one other piece, which is included in your packet, but since we first started to present this program back in October, Montgomery County, as you probably know, the executive, the county executive created the Montgomery County Affordable Housing Task Force. And this task force was charged with putting together recommendations for affordable housing. And so I have included that in your packet, and just for your review, because it did come out at the end of November. And I think it is very important for us to look at what the county is recommending in terms from this task board and see how it coordinates with what it is that we want to do as well.
Yeah, thank you for that.
The other thing that you may not be aware of, because this was just finalized the other day, we've been approached by the University of Maryland through their housing policy group?
Your urban planning.
Urban planning organization, urban planning department, excuse me. And their graduate students, they're taking their housing policy course, have selected Tacoma Park through a variety of options. And Linda will be meeting with them on Thursday.
Thursday.
To talk about them undertaking, as part of their final project, an evaluation of existing housing policies at the federal, state, and county level, and how they can be used to maximize the city's rents, or how they can be used or married with the city's rent stabilization program to come up with some affordable housing policies or actions that the city might need to undertaking. And that would be done sometime in early to mid-May.
Great.
Yeah, it was very nice.
And I know that the county council has had a proposal from one of our former colleagues.
Councilmember Elrich called, his staff called. They have a copy of our rent stabilization ordinance, and according to the Gazette, they're going for it, or he is.
He's requesting that the county use our rent stabilization law as a model for a county law.
One last thing, if I might, before you talk amongst yourselves, to expand a little bit upon what, are you former mayor or, yeah, ex-mayor?
Just like the late mayor.
Mayor or mayor or mistress?
The term is former.
Former mayor. Porter indicated, and just to kind of expand a little bit upon what Linda was talking about, the reality is, for a community of our size and with the staff resources that we have, Linda has done a tremendous amount to advocate for affordable housing. Our focus has been on outreach referrals, giving people the educational resources they need, the contacts that they need, so that they know what their rights are, that they develop the skills to take advantage of those rights, and to hook them up with the resources that are available. If you go through and you take the time to look at the information that's included in the matrix, many of the programs that are available, that will do mortgages, that will provide rental housing assistance or energy assistance, et cetera, are available to the residents of Tacoma Park through other agencies. So what Linda has spent a lot of time on, and it really hasn't come through in some of the things that she's said, is that a lot of her energies and time are spent making sure people have that information. And while it's very modest and it's not sexy on the surface of it, it has been quite effective in terms of giving people at least an additional leg up, if you will, in terms of getting into affordable homeownership issue or opportunities or maintaining their rental property. It is a challenge, because to do many of these programs, there is capital investment that the council will need to consider. And I'll put together the information for that as far as what the impact on that would be initially, and then what the value added or the cost benefits of those particular opportunities are. So we'll be glad to give you that information. But I did want to just let you know that while many of our efforts have, over the last couple of years, on the surface are quite quiet, they have been fairly effective in terms of keeping people in Tacoma.
And if I can just add that one of the things that we'll need to consider in the relatively near future is deciding on a possible use for the $106,000 that we will be dedicating to some affordable housing program from the sale of the property on Pine Branch Road. So this is, this provides a good background for beginning to decide what we might, how we might want to use those funds. And we haven't quite decided how we might want to proceed with that, and I don't think we need to decide that tonight. But just by way of thinking about where some of this information might be helpful, I think that's the first, one of the first things that we'll need to consider. And I'm not sure if you know about that.
Yes, I did hear about that.
Okay.
I think that's a great use for the monies from that building.
Other questions?
I don't have so much of a question as just, I think, make a few points. I think the work around organizing the tenants is incredibly important and needs to continue in this lull period associated with condo conversions, because we're in an inner suburbs, we're close to transportation, and the market will rebound for condos fiercely at some point, and Tacoma Park will be the target for that. And having done exactly what the, exactly this type of organizing in Harlem to help tenants purchase their apartment buildings, it's a very long process, and capacity building in individuals is a long and challenging process. So I think we stay committed to continuing to do that, even though it feels like we have a reprieve. It is just that a reprieve for a short period of time, so we, so I. The second thing is, I agree with Kathy a great deal about affordable homeownership. And I think there's an important aspect to this that Councilmember Clay and I were discussing in the break, is that we are a very diverse city, if you look at this as a whole, but we also are still a very segregated city, both economically and racially. And I think if we're going to address that issue, it's going to be partially through affordable homeownership models. And I think, I would suggest sort of a three-part program to do that. The first would be to make sure that we have the homeownership tax credit at the right level, so that if we, so that when we do the second piece of the program, the families that are on fixed income or lower income that own houses won't be forced out as taxes go up. But the second piece would be to tack on, for homeowners, a tax that's dedicated, a small, well, we have to think about how much we want to commit to it, but some level of tax that then gets put into a fund specifically associated with doing affordable homeownership. And then the last piece is that when you help people to purchase those affordable homes, you have to create a way that it's not just a one-time windfall purchase for that family, and then it, the equity goes up. And there are ways to structure their arrangements in the contract so that their equity appreciation exists but is limited, so when they sell the house, it's to an affordable, it's an affordable unit to an income-qualified person. So those are sort of three pieces I think we need to think about, and see if maybe there's other communities, you know, Colleen knows more about this than I do, that have tried and approached similar to that. So those are how the three pieces I see sort of fit together, to preserve for, and to make sure that homeowners who are already in affordable houses don't get priced out by the market, but also by any additional taxes we may levy to help other homeownership purchases.
And I saw Councilmember Snapper, and then either Councilmember Clay, or she's giving a girl scout.
No, I think so.
Two things. Could you give us a little update on where we are on the utility cost study? And then I have a second question on an entirely different topic.
Councilmember Snapper is referring to a utility surcharge that was part of the rent stabilization recodification discussion predated several of you on the council. One of the options that the council had asked us to investigate at that time was the feasibility of doing a surcharge that landlords would be able to of doing a surcharge that landlords would be able to assess to their tenants to offset the increasing cost of utilities for, in buildings where the landlord paid the utility bill. So many of you may have just gotten a bill saying that your electric, I think it's the electric bill, it's going to be going up about 9%, plus you get this extra nifty little $20 a month surcharge to cover the costs of making improvements.
Plus, plus the 9%.
Plus, that's in addition to the 9%. We have, since that discussion, and frankly, prior to that discussion, have been soliciting the assistance of the local landlords, and basically asking them for copies of their utility bills, so that we can pull together enough research and do the diligence that we need to do to establish a surcharge. Frankly, we've gotten very limited response, and that's with direct mail pieces, with Jean Kerr, who's on our landlord tenant staff, and has, has made direct phone calls to people, and asking them for that information, so that we could take it, forward it over to Dr. Barr, who would analyze it, and help us work towards getting that surcharge established. Due to the lackluster response that we received, we looked at other alternatives, one of which was contacting the Housing Opportunities Commission, which does the annual utility allowance, which they apply to their public housing properties, as well as the Section 8 or the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and spoke with the individual that does that analysis on an annual basis. And right now, we're sort of at loggerheads in terms of not having a sufficient amount of information to effectively document how utility costs and usages have been going up over the last two years. But then, based on the information that the guide, based on the information that the HOC consultant gave us, he's introduced a whole nother series of factors that need to be taken into consideration in establishing a utility surcharge. How old is the building? How tall is the building? Is it a single-family house, a townhouse, a condominium, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? What the type of utilities are, and that type of thing. Introducing a variety of factors that, right now, we're just sort of trying to get a handle around in terms of how we might be able to administer this most effectively, so that we're not figuring out a different utility charge, or utility surcharge for 3,826 rental units in Tacoma Park separately. So that's where we're at right now. So we're investigating the viability or the feasibility of doing a surcharge, and we'll be coming back to you with some specific recommendations as to, here's a surcharge we'd like to recommend, or, given these other factors, and the option that landlords now have in terms of the Fair Return Rent Increase petition, whether or not we promote that as a means of recouing some of the costs that people have incurred as a result of these utility surcharges. If you recall, the Fair Return Rent Increase petition takes into consideration increasing operating expenses, and allows a landlord to increase rents above the consumer price index, to adjust for increases in your property insurance, property taxes, utilities, maintenance costs, et cetera. And the initial, our initial sense is that may be the most effective and appropriate way of dealing with some of the utility surcharges, or the utility costs that landlords are incurring now. Did any of that make sense?
Did, yeah, just a quick, did you indicate whether any of the landlords have responded on the utility survey to say something like, no, this isn't appropriate, or no, people aren't going to give it to you for a particular reason, or there's just no response?
We've gotten some responses, we've gotten people that has said, sure, no problem, and then don't do it. We've gotten, and no responses. So nobody said, this isn't appropriate. We have contacted the utility companies directly to see if we could get authorization from the individuals who would, and the utility company would then release the information directly to us, and that's not an option. We have looked at the possibility of getting the utility companies to just do sort of a blind release of information, and that's not feasible either, based on the information that they provided to us.
Dr. Barr had informed us that we needed over 50% of the landlords to respond to, to a questionnaire about utility costs, sending in their utility costs for the last year, or two. So right now, I think we have about six. Now, the survey we sent out was not to every landlord, so it's, so we don't want to give you the impression that out of all the landlords we surveyed, we only got five. No, that's, that's not it. I think we sent out notices to about 15 landlords, and we got five back.
Maybe you could amend the law to say that only those property owners respond to the survey are eligible for utility charges.
That's a great idea.
That has come up in the conversation, yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking, well, gee, maybe the mayor could send a letter saying, you wanted this, we thought it was a good idea, we wanted to do it, if we don't get that information, it's not going to happen. Put up or shut up.
Right about this perspective, yeah, we don't have enough data to push it, but we'll continue to explore, and that's an option. We're changing the line recording.
Thank you. Yeah, your second question?
Yeah, which is morphed into two. I didn't realize until I looked at my notes, it's sort of two separate issues. One is, I think in addition to the efforts that you've talked about so far, I think we should also put in the mix some efforts to slow the increase in speculative prices, and specifically, what I've heard asked about is to slow the, I'll call it mansionization kind of thing that happens to neighborhoods, in which people start putting up these really enormous homes compared to the rest of, you know, completely out of character to the size and footprint of the other homes on the block. And I think the city should explore some efforts in, to deal with that issue, as a way of slowing the increase in prices. And the second thing I wanted to ask about is more a question, and that concerns, I was impressed with the list of assistance for homeowners in purchasing property, and whether it was tenants, or, you know, there's a variety of things involved in the various kinds of purchasing, and I did wonder about condos. Do these homeowner programs apply to condos as well? Because as Bruce has pointed, I'm sorry, Mayor Williams has pointed out, one of the places where people can't afford to purchase in Tacoma Park are condos, because they tend to be at least a bit cheaper than homes.
All of the programs there refer to ownership, homeownership, or condo values as well.
Right, that's just what I wanted to do, thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had to step out for a second, but did we talk at all about sort of the green affordability? Because one way to help maintain affordability is to help people reduce their cost of ownership, and I don't think we've considered that at all, and that might be something that's worth considering, and I suppose it, it might be, I hadn't given it much thought, but I mean, it might be worth considering for our issue around some of our smaller apartment buildings, to, to provide some incentive to convert to lower-cost utilities, and I don't know if that could help us with some of our utility issues at all, but I'll just throw that out there. I think that a transfer tax, a real estate transfer tax is one of the best ways to fund affordable homeownership. And the reason that, and it's used throughout the country, and the reason why I think that's the most appropriate approach, rather than just an additional tax on our, on our homeowners, is because when, when you have a situation like we've had recently in Tacoma Park, where the, the home values have increased, people cash out that increase and leave, and go on to other communities, but it is actually, it's the value of all of the things that we as a community put into our community that allow that home to increase in value. And it's reasonable, then, that some of that increase in value would be returned to the community at the point at which someone actually collects the cash on the value. And my concern is if we just, we just increase taxes across the board for current homeowners, that is an additional burden on our low-income homeowners, and it's additional burden on elderly people who are aging in place. And to me, it makes more sense to actually catch the money at the point at which it's, it's paid to the person. And for homeowners, they don't actually get that until they sell the house. In rental properties, it makes more sense on a, on a monthly basis, because that's when the landlord is actually collecting the income from the business that they're operating. And so I would like us to more aggressively pursue the ability to do a real estate transfer tax, to help fund affordable housing programs for homeownership in the, in the city.
And if, and if I can just add that at this point, that is on the table with the efforts of the Maryland Municipal League in Annapolis for the current session, and that it's possible that that may go somewhere.
Yay. Well, it's become a pretty common tool across the country, so.
But is it paid by the seller or by the buyer?
Well, you, they negotiate that between themselves. I mean, most, it, it, taxes that are paid are paid differentially across the country based on the custom of the local area. A lot of places split certain taxes, and in other places, like the seller pays one tax, and the buyer pays, pays another tax. So it would, it would depend on the custom that was developed, and that would be negotiated at the time of, of sale.
Or, or it could be into the legislation that the seller pays it.
You could write it into legislation that the seller pays it, but that doesn't mean that, at the time of the purchase transaction, that that won't be adjusted.
It might be negotiated away.
Yeah, it would be adjusted through the contracting process, so.
Regardless of who you assign it to, it's an economic transaction, so it affects either the price of the home or not, so it's sort of arbitrary to say you're going to assign it to one person or the other, because it's going to be a negotiation regardless whether it's explicitly about that tax, or about the price of the home that's paid.
Exactly. I think the issue, we've talked about the issue about equity limits before, which I think you also brought up, and I think that's an, that's an interesting conversation that I guess I, if we ever got to that point, would like to talk about a little bit more, because I think there's, there's both sides of the issue. One side is that, once a community makes an investment, you want to get as much as you can out of it. And so when you do low-income housing tax credits, if you can get a 40-year agreement on your affordability, that's terrific. But when you do a 40-year agreement on equity limitation for a low-income person who buys into a household, and with homeownership, and the, you're, you know, you have, you have a 30-year mortgage pattern, at the end of the 30 years, you own your house, and you own all the equity in it, and that is a major savings vehicle in the United States, is probably the major savings vehicle in the United States. You are helping low-income folks to buy into the, into the community, which is great, but then, once they have the capacity maybe to turn over into another loan, they may, but they may also move on and leave the community, so that they can then move into some other housing that, where they can, they can actually continue to gather equity. And so I think we should talk about the trade-offs that are involved in that, what's an appropriate length of time, and, and possibly amortizing the, the equity issue over time. A lot of communities do it, so that if you live in the house for 20 years, at the end of the 20 years, you, you get full, you know, 100% equity out of it, but if you sell it in two years, you, you may only get, you know, 10% of the equity increase. If you sell in five years, you know, you might get 30 or something. But, but, so I think that, I would like to have more conversation about that. I guess a suggestion that I would make around the mansionization issue is that it'd be great if there was some sort of a limit on getting the permit, because it seems to me like a lot of the mansionization that's occurring in Tacoma Park are people buying these houses, blowing them out, and then selling them. And, you know, if you had to hold on to the house for five years after you doubled the square footage, maybe this should be some relationship, if you double the square footage, you have to hold the house for 10 years before you can sell it. But, but, you know, something about the permitting process around that that would stop, because it's the speculation part of it, I think that is the egregious driving part of it. I know people who have loved the community that they've lived in, they started out in a two-bedroom house, they have five kids now, they wanted to keep their same neighbors, and so they, you know, they built an extra three bedrooms on the top of their house. I don't think that's necessarily what we want to stop. And the last thing that I'm reminded of is that, I, I think it's important that when we have people in the city that are on our committees, or our commissions, and what would you call COLTA, is that a commission?
Yes.
That they meet the, they meet the standards that we would like people to meet in the, in the community. So if we have landlords that are on COLTA, that are regularly having complaints filed against them, or being sued, or engaged in really bad condo conversions, and treating people really poorly, I would like to know what the, what the policy is for removing them from the, removing them from the committee.
Council makes all the individual appointments, and there is no policy regarding the unappointment of a member, except some of them have bylaws, but I don't believe COLTA does.
You, you guys are looking at city committees as a generic area, and I think that would be the appropriate place, if I could offer a suggestion.
I, I would like to add that to the discussion, because there's, I have a particular interest in that area.
Keep, keep your lists, and, and remember that that impacts the, the current practice, which is to reappoint without re-interview.
Yes, that's exactly who I was thinking about. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Wright, and then we'll try and wrap up. So if anybody else has anything, get it formulated now.
Thank you, I just have two quick, kind of related things. One is a problem that's been brought to my attention, or a possible problem, with the tenant's right to purchase, and that is when an organization, and the, the concern that I heard expressed was from a nonprofit housing organization negotiates to purchase a property, and then the tenants decide to exercise their right to purchase the property, the nonprofit organization has to eat the legal expenses that they put in to prepare and negotiate the, the deal, and then the tenants are able to take advantage of that deal, which we certainly want to support the tenants. But I think it's fair to discuss whether we want to provide some relief for the nonprofit organization, so that they don't have to eat the entire cost of the negotiations that led up to that good price for the tenants. So I would just like that to be added to the discussion at the appropriate time. And then the other item I wanted to bring up is an article that one of my constituents brought to my attention in a German newspaper, about a program from that country that they have found to be extremely successful, and that is a utility, let's say, a rental property upgrade requirement that helps to save on utility bills. So there is some, and I'll get more information on the program to you, Sarah, but it requires the rental property owners to make certain upgrades to their properties, which, and the end result is, it saves on utility bills, and the articles point out that this was not received well by the property owners initially, but after the program was in place for a while, that the property owners and the tenants both felt that they had gained from it.
And if I could just tack on to Councilmember Siemens' first question, if, if you're going to come back with any information or any thoughts on the... you're going to come back with any information or any thoughts on the plight of the nonprofits' expenses in coming up with the deal, I would want to know what, if, whether there's a sense that there's a similar issue for other people who might be in the same situation, or whether it's different.
The situation that council member Siemens is referring to is probably a once in a, has never happened before, and there are other circumstances involved in that, and we'll be glad to get you any information.
Okay.
While I'm thinking of it, the green building thing you're talking about, I had to take my son to the orthodontist this afternoon, so of course I'm reading old magazines while I'm waiting. One of the things that I read about was that Levittown is now undertaking a program that will come back, that links into that, and it's called Green Levitt, where the city is, is doing that very thing in terms of advocating for solar power upgrades with utilities, and there's one other initiative. But I'll get that information, we'll pull it together for you. So it's not just Germany, but other places.
I just wanted to respond a couple things, council member Clay. I said I agree with you that if we get the right to do a transfer tax, that would be a more prudent and desired way to fund homeownership purchase. But if we do, I still think the possibility of increasing property taxes to pay for that is a good one. And just to clarify, I think we'd want to expand the homeownership tax credit so that we wouldn't be causing people on fixed income or low, low-income residents to, to bear a significant burden associated with that and potentially get pushed out of their houses. And then lastly, I think it is a very interesting conversation to have about the equity question. The way I think about it is that we want to set it up such that this, the first savings that you get through paying down a mortgage, you get to keep. The appreciation, which is, has been astronomical recently, but over the history of, of housing prices in the U.S. are much smaller than it's been in the last five years, the appreciation is, is more up for discussion. Maybe you give them a portion of appreciation, or, or none at all potentially, but the, the savings vehicle that the paying down the mortgage, the discipline that creates for people, they definitely get to keep all of that. So there's still, for low-income residents, a very good savings tool.
Yeah, in every program I've ever seen, they get to keep the equity that they pay into it, and the only part that's up for discussion is the equity that's created by the appreciation.
Yeah, there's several models out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was helpful, and we'll have further discussion on this stuff. And thank you for returning.
Well, I might be watching you on cable when you have the further discussion.
It's not you.
I have to do this though.
I hope you're in person.
No, I can't, I can't do it.
And now our final item is a discussion of proposed Montgomery County zoning tax amendment 0801 revising the definition of green area.
Okay. Welcome, meeting mayor and council. I'm sorry to bring such a dry topic before you, and I'll try to explain it very clearly, and I've actually been talking with a few people in the community. I think everyone's a little confused about it. So there's four main points that I want to go through. One is what the definition is, not the legal definition, but what they're actually saying when they say green area, which is slightly confusing. You know, what the city revitalization environmental goals are, and talk a little bit about the unusual situation that the city is in versus the rest of the county in terms of our property's size and our zoning, and also discuss why this may have an adverse impact on the city's ability to redevelop smaller properties, or most, many of our undeveloped properties that have been mentioned as desirable to redevelop by reducing flexibility. So, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with William White, or people in the audience that, in the viewing audience who may be familiar with William White, but he was a sociologist or urban planner, I'm not sure what his exact discipline is, he was very readable though. And he wrote in the sixties and seventies, he had a whole classes and classes of graduate students who did research on public space. And, and, and one of the things that he found when he talked about public space, that in urban areas or areas that are retail and shopping oriented and that have a lot of pedestrians, is that there's, your building line or your line of buildings alongside your public sidewalk is very important. People actually walk faster when they walk past banks or places that they feel unsafe in versus when they walk by shops, when they tend to walk slower. And so when we look at the definition for green area, I think what they're really talking about is public space or open area, and trying to make sure that throughout the county, when properties are redeveloped, that there is sufficient space for the public to use that's not taken up by parking or by buildings. And I think that's a very laudable goal. And it's a little confusing that it's called green area because that makes us think of the environment and grass or trees or animals or, but not really, that it's really talking about places that people can use and use in what I would consider a positive way, so a safe way as opposed to an unsafe way. And so, and, and that's actually mentioned in the test amendment, which I won't bore you by reading, but it, but I'm referring to it, that there's a desire in amending the green area definition to make sure that there is more open space in the county that people can access. The test amendment talks about, one, one of the reasons that we were bringing this to you is that the test amendment restricts the definition of green area or open space so that it cannot take place on top of a building, or a building footprint is excluded from the definition. And I don't know if you've been in Alexandria, or in Bethesda, or seen some of the proposals that have come before you, they've all mentioned green roofs. In Alexandria, there's a green, sort of green, and also public plaza, great, public plaza space that's over top of a parking garage, because the garage is actually below grade. It's still a building, but it's, but there's, you only have to walk up a few steps to get to the roof of it, and it doesn't really look like a roof on, on three of the four sides of the parking garage, only one side has the entrance. And then in Bethesda, there's actually a park near the metro that's on top of a building, it's in between several buildings, and it has a park over top of it. So there are some very good examples of public space or environmental space, there's public spaces on top of buildings, but then sometimes you also have presented to the council in the past, one of these proposals has been approved, but the other proposals were only presented in a more of an informational type of presentation, they didn't actually come to fruition as full development projects. Did have green roofs in, in, in the proposal, and part of that is to meet the green area requirement, because there has been flexibility on the part of the planning department in the past to, to allow buildings to have green roofs as part of the green area requirement. Now, the, one of the reasons that we're concerned about this is because there is a strong desire that we've seen expressed by the community and by the council, and in the city master plan for revitalization of many of our commercial areas, and that's throughout the city. It's Old Town, Tacoma Junction, Flower Avenue, Piney Branch, and New Hampshire Avenue, where there is a strong desire to see more infill development, or redevelopment of existing properties that have already been bulldozed, have very little green space on them in the environmental sense, have not great public space on them either, it's mainly parking lot, but to take these sites and make them into places that people want to walk around, want to shop, people express a desire for cafes, for restaurants, and for better retail. And people have also expressed a strong interest in green building and more environmentally sustainable types of buildings. One of our concerns is that when you do infill and you start to build walkable places, it's very important to have a consistent street wall of stores, so that you have, so that people who shop around walk from place to place. And frankly, when I talk to store owners, they want to see more pedestrians. pedestrians want to see more stores, and the stores want to see more pedestrians. But that consistency in your street wall helps to build your economic value in your, your shopping area as a destination, whether it be for a neighborhood or in a place like Tacoma Langley Park for a region. Obviously, the number of stores you have is also important. Another one of the goals is for mixed-use development in all of our areas, and we, we do allow mixed-use development in Tacoma Park on commercial properties. And so what that's encouraging is that we go about the one-story commercial development standard that we seem to have a lot of already, and start to add residential and office. Now, the amount of parking that's required when you start to add these uses also grows. So, and we do, we do allow reductions in parking. The most recent proposal that came through, we actually had between 50 and 60% reduction of the parking per the Montgomery County ordinance, which it wasn't, and, and that made a lot of sense in terms of walking in metro and so forth, but there is, especially the smaller your property gets, you, there's a big struggle between providing parking both for, for tenants and for customers, and also fitting the building on the site, and deciding how that all goes in. And especially in areas outside of Old Town, there isn't that much street parking, so you are really relying now, maybe in the future there will be on-street parking, but currently we are relying on being able to park those, that development on, on the site or close by the site. Tacoma Park is, is unusual in the context of Montgomery County because we do have the commercial revitalization overlay zone. And that's a zone which requires that all developments over 1,000 square feet go through site plan, which means that they are, all of these commercial sites are subject to a 10 to 15% green area or open space requirement. The, that's, that can be a considerable amount of square footage for a very small property or even a mid-sized property. In addition, properties in Tacoma Park frequently are small, or else there are a series of small properties that have property lines between them that, that require, are required to go through subdivision before you go through site plan in order to make them into one property because you're not allowed, now I'm getting into planner, and I'm sorry. But you, it, it means that you have to go through a lot of regulatory hoops and satisfy a lot of requirements in order to go, in order to become redeveloped, which means that even if the cause were not there, they would still probably have to go through a green area requirement. The, the allowing green area to be on a roof in Tacoma Park means that a smaller property, such as the property at Laurel and Carroll, the property at Piney Branch and Flower Avenue, the property on the northwest corner of New Hampshire Avenue, and Ethan Allen would be allowed to provide some of the green area on the roof, which does meet some, meets a lot of environmental goals, you know, reduces the heat effect and so forth, but might not meet the general open space. However, we feel that by providing better, a better building height to better frame the street, and being able to better park or allow flexibility for the developer and the community, obviously, because all of our properties, when they go through site plan, there's a lot of community involvement. It certainly doesn't say we wouldn't have a say in this, but that everyone would be able to have the flexibility to negotiate the best possible siding of all of the parts of the building, the parking, and then any landscaping that's required for the parking lot, and possibly the green area or open space requirement. Maybe there's enough room for a big plaza or a pool on that property, and that makes the most sense, but maybe it makes more sense that that area be dedicated to square footage or to parking on that site, which would also has a 5% interior green requirement. But not to confuse you any further, but that there, that retaining the flexibility for our small properties would be a good way to make sure that they are able to develop to the best of our abilities.
And if I can just add that I was able to talk with council member Elrich earlier this evening, right at the end, right after we voted to go into closed session, about what his intent was with this zoning tax amendment. And I'll see if I can summarize his intent in about 30 seconds. He said that this came out of a particular situation in downtown Bethesda where in meeting the green area requirements, the developer put the green roof on, and there was no public access to it, and the argument that they made was that this met the, kind of the public amenity portion of the green area requirement because adjacent high-rises could look at the green roof. And so I believe that's a fair assessment of where this started.
So I'm reading the comments from, either from the committee on the environment or from a couple of people on the committee on the environment. And it seems to me like the, when the, when the council, when the county uses the term green area, what they really mean is public plaza space. And it could be, and if you look at the other definitions, it could be that that public plaza space is the green field. It could be that that public plaza space is like the, I see they've changed, so it includes like the, the pool, but that spray fountain in, in downtown Silver Spring is actually technically a pool, legally a pool, or other, other public plaza-style gathering places. And what the committee on the environment is talking about is a, you know, a different trade-off, sort of more literally green. And it doesn't seem like the original purpose of this was to capture the environmental value in the way that we do for, you know, the green roof being a stormwater runoff capture and those sorts of things. I don't know if there's any way to reconcile that here or not.
In the past, the planning board has interpreted it as both a green benefit because they have a lot of green roofs which do provide some mitigation of stormwater. And we, in, in the interest of flexibility, we'd like to maintain that, that, that flexibility. So we do recommend that the commercial revitalization overlay zone be excluded from, I'm sorry, that in the commercial revitalization zone, the building footprint be allowed to be included in the definition of green area. And so that would be a, a building that provides either plaza on top of it, a pool on top of it, or a green roof on top of it. But that, one that would be, I don't think a plaza that wasn't accessible to people would be considered, would meet the requirement, but generally, they have a lot of green roofs to meet the requirement.
So could you put something in it about the green area being accessible to the public?
I'm not, well, I mean, could.
Would that address, I mean, that green roof means a stretch to argue that it's accessible because you can see it. But I mean, I wonder if that would address the issue that they were trying to get at.
I think their definition is still fairly vague. But we could look into that.
I, I wonder if the, the way to go is to, I don't know, do we, it's, it sounds like we could have some proposed language and... It's, it sounds like we could have some proposed language, and either submitted in writing, or staff testify, or one of us testify, depending on what we come up with. Have, have you conferred with Councilmember Elrich's staff on this?
Yes.
And did they have a reaction to the recommendation?
They understood that what I was saying is that in, that we would prefer revitalization that included an unbroken wall of buildings, as opposed to many buildings with small spaces in the, in between them. And so that, that seemed fairly understandable.
And, and that discussion was a day other than Friday?
It was Friday. Or Thursday. It was Friday, and that was why it was with the staff.
Okay, because my understanding was, given the circumstances of the county council on Friday, any, any discussion may have been not very, I don't know, understood, or, there was, there were reasons why the discussion may not have gotten where it needed to go. And so he encouraged that we continue to talk with them, and the quality of the discussion might be a little better this week. And depending on where that goes, maybe we might need to revisit this and be ready to submit some language. And any further thoughts on this, feel free to contact Alana, and see if we can get this wrapped up as simply as possible. Do you need anything else from us?
No.
Any other questions? We're done.